Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Stratford City Council meeting. Begin this evening's meeting with a moment of silent reflection. Thank you, Madam Clerk, the meeting is yours.
Through your worship, item two is declarations of the Kean area interest. Are there any declarations that so please state the general nature there?
Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yes, for item six point two in planning and heritage committee. There is a sign request and I am a member of the board for the organization requesting the sign.
Thank you. Anyone further? All right, seeing none.
Through your worship, I do see Counselor Gaffney's hand.
Counselor Gaffney.
Yes, sir, your worship. Item five point two, planning heritage. I happen to know budding trust in property about in this one.
Thank you. All right, seeing other hands.
Item three is adoption of the minutes and there is a motion that the minutes of the special meeting dated May sixteenth and the regular meeting dated May twenty fourth be adopted as printed.
Moved by Counselor Azalakos and Counselor Henderson. Seeing none. All those in favor? Post Fanny, let's carry.
Item four is adoption of the addendum and there is no addendum to be adopted. So moving to item five, report of the committee of the whole in camera session. Item five point one, just prior to today's regular council meeting, a committee of the whole was held an in camera session. For the following reasons. Item four point one mediation service under the personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal employees or local board employees exemption. Item four point two land negotiation update under a proposed or pending acquisition or disposal of land by the municipality. Advice at a subject to solicitor client privilege and a position plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations carried on or to be carried on. By or on behalf of municipality exemptions. And item five point one, which was appointment to the festival hydro Inc. and Festival Hydro Services Inc. Board of Directors. And that was considered under the personal matters about an identifiable individual exemption. And at the in camera session, direction was given on all three items.
Thank you.
Item six is hearings of deputations and presentations and item six point one is a presentation of the cultural diversity report findings. And there is a motion that the presentation by Hamlin Grange.
All right, Uber Council, Richmond, and by Counselor Burbak, Mr. Grange, we heard all those in favor. Post Fanny, thank you, Mr. Grange, welcome this evening.
Thank you, your worship, counselors. Good evening. I can proceed as
before we speak, I think the CEO was going to give an overview. I missed that.
Okay, yes, okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you very much and through your worship. So I'd like to welcome Hamlin Grange to tonight's city council meeting. We are so pleased to have you here. Hamlin is Diversa Pro's founder and principal consultant. And Hamlin is a diversity and inclusive inclusion strategist. Diversa Pro has conducted idea audits and reviews for numerous organizations. And Hamlin has delivered many key note speeches here in Canada, in the United States, the Caribbean, and Europe. The city retained Diversa Pro last year to develop a DEI plan for the city of Stratford. And the scope of that plan is to survey the existing employee groups, members of council, and key stakeholders to review and evaluate the current state of the practice of diversity. And inclusion within this organization. To review and evaluate key policies and practices relating to internal human resources and the community service delivery. To present a report to the corporate leadership team and council identifying work, culture, characteristics, gaps. Recommendations on areas to focus on improvement and internal and external challenges. And also to facilitate a session to assist the city with developing an actionable diversity and inclusion plan. So it is a pleasure to have Hammond with us this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much. I, am I able to share my screen? I just wanted to make sure what the protocol is. Okay, I'll do that now. And you would have received a a PDF version of this, of this presentation. So I will, I'll go through it at a fairly high level. But I'm more than happy to to stop and answer any questions that council members may have as a result as I go through. So once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to to work with your, with your team. And it's, it's been a real pleasure in terms of how your staff and, and individuals that we've been working with, in particular, your, your human resources manager. She's been, and has just been just tremendous in terms of access and flexibility. And as you know, sometimes these things may not necessarily go as planned, but flexibility is always important. So we really do appreciate this. The, the, the survey was in, as we say, out in the field. For nearly a month, January seventeenth to February the eleventh of this year. Hundred and forty nine employees started the survey, hundred and thirty two completed the survey. For an eighty nine percent completion rate, which I will tell you based on all the work that we've done in other organizations. This is a tremendous response rate. So clearly, folks who came to this were engaged and they were willing and, and also wanted to participate in the process. So whatever communication that was done at the city level to get employees to complete the survey, it was obviously successful. So thank you for that. It's important for you to also understand why we count incomplete surveys. Especially with this particular survey, this is not just your typical climate survey. What we're asking, not just demographic information, we're asking employees and respondents. To tell us what their personal experiences are. In this area of idea, when we talk about idea, the acronym that we use is inclusion, diversity, equity, and anti racism. And we always, we always include folks who have not completed the survey. Some people stopped for whatever reason. It could be they just, it was too long for some of them. This survey ran about, took about thirty minutes, twenty five to thirty minutes to complete. Some people may have stopped for whatever reason, but we thought it's really important to include all voices in the survey regardless of whether or not the individual completed the survey. It's important to have your voice heard in this particular process. Typically, areas for improvement typically identified are those percentages that are twenty percent or higher. And let me explain what I mean by that. If you see, for example, the vast majority of respondent agree on a particular question, let's say you have an eighty percent agreement. But you have a twenty percent disagreement. We think it's really important to pay attention also to the minority voice for those folks who are saying they disagree for whatever reason. And that, and that threshold is not, it's not, it's not a statistical or scientific reason for that, but just been our experience that we've found. Any minority voice greater than twenty percent or approaching twenty percent is important enough for you to pay attention to. Okay, and so that is the reason why we, we, we flagged that for you and it's flagged in a few times in some questions of throughout the survey. At a high level, the exact summary, I'll tell you, this is a very good survey, a very good response rate, as I said. Employees are positive about feeling respected and valued and, and they believe the city of Stratford workforce is representative of the region where it operates. And that's important in terms of where you operate, you're representative of that region. The room for improvement, and we'll go into that in a few minutes. Many employees believe that issues of prejudice and discrimination are being addressed for the most part. As supervisors did quite well in the survey. In that respondents believe that supervisors are applying fair and equitable standards and evaluations for them. Colleagues also do well. This is an organization or corporation based on how people responded. People, people like each other. That's the only way I can look at it. They, they, they get along, they have respect for each other, they're congenial, no surprise there at all in terms of where you are located. And also the size of your community. People, they know each other, they're neighbors, they, they're, they've worked together for a long time. This is what this is telling me when I look at that. Teams did best for understanding the important role of policies in achieving equality and inclusion. But there are some issues though that emerged, okay? What we found is that based on the respondents, recruitment and promotion practices could be improved. It fell short. In, in the way as some employees respondents responded to the survey. Leadership is not seen as being as diverse and diverse meaning the wide, the wide spectrum of diversity, including race, ethnicity, gender. Disability, sexual orientation. Sexism, racism, harassment, and bullying are issues. Specifically sexism seems to top the list for folks and, and you'll see in, in the survey where that, where that, where that falls. Not all employees feel they can speak up and they worry about negative consequences for speaking up. So there is a sense of risk aversion, don't want to stick your neck out a little bit. That's what we heard people responding to the survey. Differences in experience and perceptions among non-management and management. That is the only big divide that we saw in this. These two groups, non-management and management, they are experiencing the organization fundamentally different ways. We're also seeing that in terms of age as well. Very, very different in terms of how they engage in with the organization and how they perceive the organization. No surprise there, but it was important for us to capture that. Employees are more likely to, to rate attributes as agree with as opposed to strongly agree with. It's a fine point. But it's a point to be made. You want to move, you want to start moving your folks towards a strongly agree on some of these things, especially when it requires communication. Better communication, greater transparency, those sorts of things, be able to move individuals to strongly agree, a synthesis agree. And that sometimes not everyone wants to give you a five, right? Is that whole notion one to five or one to ten? There's some people just don't like giving you a full mark on ten, but they'll give you a nine, okay, or they give you an eight. But this is a difference here in terms of helping people to move towards that strongly agree. Knowledge and tools to help build more inclusive workplaces could also be improved. This is what the respondents are saying in the survey. The demographic overview, it speaks for itself. I don't think I need to go into much depth on that. You can see the age categories, eighty percent of your folks are between, you know, that age. Thirty to sixty four, mostly white workforce. That's seven percent is those individuals identified as being racialized or not white. Heterosexual workforce, eleven percent identify as not being heterosexual. Post-secondary education, you know, you know, fairly well educated from a post-secondary education perspective. Sixty six percent of folks have worked with your organization for more than ten years. Thirty four percent have not, and you can see that split between management and, and non-management. Again, this is a really high level. Here's the demographics, and this was important. Because we wanted to see whether or not your workforce is really reflective of the, of the community in which you, you reside. And also we compared to the province of Ontario. What we found was that the city of Stratford has a smaller number of young people that's aged between twenty and twenty nine. Compared with twenty percent in the same age category who are living in Stratford. And you'll see what happens as we go through it and start comparing with the provincial numbers. Thirty to sixty four, ninety two percent of the individuals are of that particular age working for the city. As opposed to eighty percent of that age group is actually present within the city. And again, you're higher number than, than what's in the province. Again, just give you a quick snapshot in terms of what your workforce is. So an, an older workforce, relatively older workforce. However, that also brings with it some challenges, okay, because the younger, the younger employees are going to make, have different expectations. And that's showing up as well in the survey as we went through it. The demographics by gender was also interesting. Seventy percent of women employees compared with forty nine percent of women of men are in non-management roles. Whereas forty two percent of males compared with twenty four percent women were in management roles. So clearly, again, there's a difference here in terms of gender. How it plays out in terms of the, the roles within the organization and, and specifically the corporation of City of Stratford. The languages, we found this was also interesting. Linguistically, the city of Stratford employees are not very diverse. Whereas the vast majority of folks speak English, but few individuals converse or read or write in another language. Now, you know, you could say, well, that's not surprising, but if you take a look at the demographic shift that may be taking place in your area. This could be an opportunity for you to, to serve your community much more effectively. As the community changes and other individuals moving to that area in your city were from a different linguistic background, there could be a gap here. But again, it just shows you where, where, where the individuals are at this, at the workforce is at this, at this point. We ask people to be personal. We ask some personal questions, you know, what's your experiences? Well, three quarters of employees say the city of Stratford workforce is representative, seventy five percent strongly agree with that. Seventy five percent feel respected and valued by their peers or their colleagues. Majority of folks say they feel respected and valued by those that they report to. Again, very positive in terms of how people are engaging with, with each other, but also how they see the organization, how it represents and reflective of the community in which they're, they're served. Again, this, this management, non-management divide we talked about, and this is really interesting. When you take a look at how they answered these questions. I feel respected and valued by those I, I report to. Well, eighty seven percent of those in a management cohort that, you know, that's higher than the non-management. Non-management said they're sixty, sixty nine percent versus eighty seven percent. So you can see again how the management, the division of the management position versus a non-management, they respond quite differently to these questions. When I speak about what my opinion is valued. Eighty one percent of those in management say yes, are positive about that. As opposed to forty five percent of non-management. My workplace makes full use of my skills and capabilities, seventy five percent management, forty one percent non-management. Again, there's some insight here to be had, okay? What's missing? Is there a gap that you can close here? What is this telling us about? How, what we can do, what we can do to close that gap between non-management and management cohort within the city? More personal experience, we looked at the gender, men versus women. Men are more likely to agree than women with these personal statements, feeling that their lived experiences reflected in the city of Stratford. Encouraged to interact across differences, feeling their opinion is valued when speaking up. If you take a look at that, I can get constructive feedback without feeling fear of negative consequences. Seventy one percent of men strongly agree or agree to this statement. As opposed to forty nine percent of women. Sixty eight percent of men say they can speak about work, their opinion is valued as opposed to fifty two percent of women. The organization encourages us to interact across differences. Sixty three percent of the men say, yes, I agree with that. Forty seven percent of women have a very different opinion of that. I feel like my identity and my lived experiences are reflected in the organization's culture. Fifty seven percent of men strongly agree or agree with that statement. As opposed to thirty eight percent of women. Again, there's that gender divide in terms of how these two different cohorts are experiencing the organization. So there's something, there's some, something going on there that's worth exploring. Again, differences in tenure, we also found this quite interesting. Years employed by the city, ten years or less. My identity and lived experiences reflected in the organization's culture, visual materials and, and communication. Those who work there ten years or more say sixty percent, they said, oh yeah, that's, that's, yes, we agree with that. As opposed to thirty six percent of those who are younger, less tenure, don't necessarily agree with that. Again, remember I talked about that generational divide? That could just simply be a fact that the younger, so-called younger generation. Their expectation is higher. They expect to see their lived experience and their identity to be more reflected in, 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 in the organization, culture, materials, and your communication. Leadership believes diversity increases our organization's quality of work and productivity. Again, very different responses there for those who've been there more than ten years and those who've been there fewer than ten years, less than ten years. I feel I have the same opportunity to advance in my career as others do. This is really interesting. Less than ten years, seventy six percent people said, yay, yes, I think I really have the opportunity to move ahead in my career. Those who've been there for ten years or more, they don't see that that way. Age differences. There's something that's going on between those age genera, this is what we call generational gap, generational diversity. And we see this showing up in organizations. Typically, when we do this kind of survey in terms of how they're engaging. Prejudice and discrimination, again, this is where it gets a little bit scratchy for folks because typically they've not answered these kind of questions before in a survey. Non-management employees consistently provided lower ratings for prejudice and discrimination statements compared to management. Again. Non-management versus management, they're looking at these issues very differently. Some of the larger gaps between them relate to providing opportunities to learn about diversity, inclusion. Racial and ethnic and gender-based stereotypes and jokes are addressed effectively. Management says yes, non-management says nah, not quite. If I had a special need that made it difficult to participate at work, I would know how to seek accommodation. Non-management folks are saying, no, not as well. That was management is much more in, in, in a higher category. Again, it's all about these two different worlds that exist right now. It's, it's, it's a paradox, it's a dichotomy rather, between non-management and management cohort within the city. Racism and sexism, this is a priority area for the city. Sexism. Forty percent of respondents say they have witnessed or experienced sexism in a workplace, okay? And there was no major response differences between men and women on this. Twenty one percent have witnessed or experienced ableism. Twenty percent have experienced racism, homophobia eighteen percent. Sixteen percent a bit lower in transphobia experienced by fewer employees. However, it is really recommended based on what we've looked at here that these issues should be addressed. And ultimately eliminated from the workforce in terms of creating an inclusive and, and equitable organization. So there's some gaps here. There's some gaps here that needs, needs to be addressed. Harassment and bullying, more than four in ten say they have witnessed or experienced harassment or bullying. Now, to, to be fair, forty nine percent of folks said, no, I have not witnessed or experienced harassment or bullying. That's a good number. But the forty five percent should, should, should cause you pause. Forty five percent of folks said, yes, I witnessed or experienced harassment and bullying in the work, in the workplace. And, and what was interesting, remember I talked about that twenty percent threshold? I was afraid of possible repercussions. Eighteen, you're approaching the twenty percent threshold here again. Remember that bumper I was telling you about? The perpetrator might be, was my direct report. It gets lower as we go down. But you got to pay attention to that twenty two percent. I do not trust the organization to properly address this issue. Okay? And eighty percent, they were afraid of, of possible repercussions for coming forward. Again, that minority voice is important. We also asked about recruitment, promotion, and recognition. Half of the respondents believe everyone has access to equal opportunity regardless of the identity. However, we found that one quarter or less believe diversity is considered in recruitment, promotion, and recognition initiatives, and there are really no significant differences detected between groups. And, and again, if you look at the, the neutral response. That's also something to pay attention to because sometimes the neutral response often indicates that people don't have enough information. Or they, they don't have an opinion on it one way or another. While my supervisor manager considers diversity when hiring, recruiting new employees, well, twenty seven percent said that this happens frequently. That's, okay, that's, that's, that's a good number. But forty six percent are neutral on that. Now, is this an opportunity for the corporation and the city to, to be more transparent about how these decisions are made? So people can actually have an opinion. This may be an indication here that people simply don't know and they don't have enough information to actually come to a conclusion, a conclusive answer. When people are hired, they're interviewed by a team that reflects their, their diversity, forty nine percent neutral on that question. Are they neutral because they don't know, they're not aware of it, what the process is? Again, this could be an opportunity for the city to, to be more transparent perhaps on, on that particular question. Hiring and compensation, two thirds of employees believe they have the same opportunities to advance their careers as others. I was again, one quarter strongly disagree or just disagree that the promotion process is fair to everyone. And one in five believe the city of Stratford understands what tokenism is and how to avoid it in recruitment. Again, you always look at, you know, that threshold, right? Twenty three percent. Twenty percent neutral. You know, look at this, organization understands what tokenism is, fifty one percent is neutral on that. Maybe again, it's an opportunity here, I think, for the city to be very transparent and to be very intentional about its values and how you go about engaging with employees and, and hiring and compensation advancement and recognition. Again, this could be some opportunities for you in terms of communicating up exactly what you do. This is what is this telling us when we look at that, at that data? I'm almost finished with this presentation. Recruitment, again, management is more likely than non-management to agree with the following. Again, we talked about that divide, again, non-management versus management. In relation to my colleagues at the same or equivalent job level, I feel fairly compensated. Eighty three percent of management, yeah, they're, they're agreeing with that. Sixty two percent of non-management have a, you know, very different perception again, right? Now, I know you've just recently gone to your, your collective bargaining process. You probably still go through some of that. This could also be a reflection of some of that, and this was taking place back in January, or people were heading towards the bargaining process. Don't know, but clearly there is a divide in terms of how non-management and management are experiencing these particular questions within the survey. And again, longer term employees are less likely to agree they have the same opportunities. Take a look at that, you know, seventy six percent, ten years or less. Very high numbers, whereas ten years or, or more feel that they may not necessarily have those opportunities to advance their careers. So again, age issues, generational diversity, and the challenges that come with that as well in the gap. Knowledge and tools, we always ask respondents this question because we want to explore, do they feel that they have the tools, the necessary tools to actually do the work of creating an inclusive, diverse, equitable, and anti-racist organization? Employees or managing staff are looking for assistance in the following areas. They want increased training and education. They want toolkits and they want best, best practices. Thirty percent saying, no, I need more, I need more. Interestingly, forty eight percent folks said, yes, I have the knowledge and tools. Well, you may, you may, you may want to interrogate that, okay? What do they mean by that? How do they know they have the, the right tools and knowledge? What are they seeing? What do they, what they think they know? They may not necessarily have those tools, but they may think they have those tools. Employees or managing staff, they said they also want to have support and want direction from senior leadership. They're looking for the senior leadership and also from council, like I was, I would also add in terms of the, the way forward. So really about it's some leadership. And priority areas were identified by respondents. And two of them really stood out. You know, all of them are important, but certainly the, the, the top four, but certainly the top two. Training and development for management and leadership team and training and development for staff. People say they want more training in this area and more development in this area. But they also want to review and improving hiring and retention practices. But there's also a, a desire to, to do more outreach, outreach and building relationships with with black indigenous and, and, and communities of color within the Stratford. And as you know, things are changing in the city. Again, this could be an opportunity for the city to sort of, to do some more external consultation. Some considerations as we close, initiate idea training, inclusion, diversity, equity, anti-racism training and development for all city of, city of Stratford employees. You may also want to create more opportunities for employees to discuss these issues, race, identity, cultural experiences among themselves and with their supervisors in a safe and brave environment. You don't want to create the situation where people feel that they're being forced to talk about issues. But you want to create an environment, people feel that they can bring their whole selves. Even if they don't agree with everybody, at least there's an opportunity to talk about these things in a very open environment to discuss these kind of incidents at work. Review these visual materials that people are talking about and communication to make sure that they truly are reflecting the city's philosophy and diversity, inclusion, and equity. The city is changing, but so is the philosophy and the mindset of the city, of, of, of the city. And I think that needs to be reviewed. Ensure these policies and processes are applied consistently across the entire workforce, including compensation. Recognition and awards, and including both management and non-management employees. And finally, we're also recommended that the city of Stratford may want to consider conducting a larger study of the general population related diversity and inclusion. This was just focused on your employees. It would be a fascinating exercise to go through the entire city, go across the entire city to find out what, what exactly are you, what are your citizens saying about these issues? You know, what are some of the concerns? What are some things that the city may want to consider based on what we're hearing from, 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 from citizens and, and voters across the city? So I will end there. So I will end there, I know I've been to it very, very quickly, but I was told I had a very limited time, I didn't want to take up too much of that. I hope I didn't go too fast, but you do have the PowerPoint printout and you can go back at your leisure. That concludes my presentation, I'm open to any questions that anyone may want to pose to me. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. All right, any questions for Mr. Chairman? Counselor Burbank?
Thank you very much for your presentation, that was really interesting. I, I'm particularly interested in the reaching out, building relationships with different communities. And I, I don't know, it's a big question, if there's any easy way or, or quick answers to how a city would be able to do such a thing, what, how do you go about doing that?
Wow, well, you know, it is, you know, someone once said it is sort of like, you know, how, how do you eat a whale? A little bit at a time, okay, but you need to have a plan, clearly. I know, for example, with the, with your police services, for example, they're, they're likely doing similar kind of outreach. I, I always like to look at what I call positive deviances within organizations. If you look at certain sectors within your corporation, whether it's the police, whether it's your library system, they're reaching out to communities. Is there a way to replicate what they're doing that works? Oftentimes, these silos are created and silos can sometimes become bunkers and they don't talking to each other. So the first step I would do before we start rushing up and start doing this outreach, almost do an inventory to find out who is doing what and how it's working. And then collaboration, 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 okay? You want to get the biggest bang for your buck, okay? So why not bring together organizations or departments within the city that are doing great work in this area and find out what works so you can replicate it? That for me would be just a start off the top of my head. I don't know if that's helpful for you, I don't like to give you top ten things to do because if I give you ten things to do, the next time you bump up against a problem, those ten things just don't apply anymore, so I'm always hesitant to do that.
Thank you, that, that's very helpful, thanks.
Anything further? Counselor Assalacos?
Uh, thank you for the presentation, I'm always interested in sort of a data-informed approach to asking some of these questions. So I, I, I really enjoyed the presentation, I found it fascinating. So I'm wondering whether there was, there were enough respondents, I was actually really pleased with the response rate, whether there was enough of a response rate to get any more granular data across departments or to understand some of the gender or age dynamics that we're seeing by workgroups possibly or, or, you know, traditionally more male fields or things like that. And I'm not asking you if that data is available for you to talk to now, but I'm wondering whether some of that data is available to HR to sort of have a review of that.
Yeah, actually, no, I think once you want to get that, that kind of granularity, or I think what you need to do is you probably need to do at some point an employment systems review. And I don't know whether or not the city has actually done that. An employment systems review, take into account all of these different categories that, that would give you that real data capture in terms of this very specific minutia we want to get into. We have a lot of data in this, we could massage it a little bit to see what's there because we have the tabulations. I'm gonna have to take a look at that, but the kind of things that you're talking about, that would emerge out of a really robust employment ESR and a robust employment system review right across the organization. You started looking at pay gaps, pay rates, things like that. That I think is something that the city may want to consider, and I don't know whether or not that's been done. Your C O may be in a better position to answer that question.
Thank you.
Any other member of council this time? Would someone make a motion to receive the report as presented? Thank you, Counselor Ingram and Counselor Gaffney. All those in favor? Post any, that's carried. Mr. Grange, thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you very much and appreciate, really appreciate talking to all of you, take care now, have a good evening, bye-bye.
All right, thank you. Next item?
Item six point two is a delegation request from Robert Lemon, and there is a motion at the delegation of Robert Lemon regarding report COU twenty-two dash zero five zero, request from owner to reconsider encroachment agreement for seven Culber Street, be heard.
Moved by Counselor Seven and second by Counselor Burbank, all those in favor? Post any? And the clerk will now bring in Mr. Lemon.
Unmute. Can you see me, hear me? Hello?
Mr. Lemon, we cannot see you, but we can hear you.
There we go. Sorry. So, okay. Thank you very much, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present to you some material that's related to the, my requested revision to the encroachment agreement for seven Culber Street and the Tower House at seven Culber, next slide, please. Just a reminder, you've seen this before and, and I won't repeat too much information, but there's new information that's come to my awareness since the last time you reviewed that, which was back at council in February. The reminder that the building is a landmark of Canadian design by acclaimed architect Shim and Sutcliffe, and it's about the rampant planter and the rampant planter are integral to the design and the functioning of the building. In February, you approved encroachment for the parking space, but also included the rampant planter, something that I objected to at the time. I chose to dispute the inclusion of the rampant planter and are seeking your support for the reasons that are outlined here. The rampant planter are not new, they're not inadvertently erected, nor were they built without permission. The city of Stratford approved these elements when approving the site plan agreement in nineteen ninety-eight, issuing a building permit in nineteen ninety-eight, issuing an occupancy permit in two thousand and one, and issuing a zoning confirmation letter in two thousand and nineteen. None of this is, while it's referenced in the staff report, there's no discommentary about these four items in the staff report. So these facts are supported by a letter from Shim Sutcliffe, which you received today, next slide, please. So Shim Sutcliffe were the architects from the inception to the completion of the project, and they confer and agree with the facts that are I'm about to present to you. Next slide. Zoning amendment and parking, so this is, again, you're, you heard me before about the other application, which was to amend the zoning for both properties, which you agreed to, which I'm very happy that you did last month. And in doing that, you reduced the parking requirement for seven Culber to zero, which was done to maintain zoning compliance for seven Culber should the parking encroachment ever be canceled. Nonetheless, having a parking space for seven is essential for guests and visitors to seven and nine my inn that I've created in the two properties. That is why I wish to pursue an encroachment agreement for the existing driveway parking space. And I'm willing to enter into such an agreement, pay for the parking space, pay the annual fee and paying insurance as outlined in the staff report. Next slide. So the staff report, and I, I must say that I've had to prepare this presentation since Friday when I first learned that the staff report is actually not recommending refusal of my request. I seem to have lost the, the screen. Could I see the screen for this item?
Through your worship, we're just looking to reconnect, but if you want to keep going, we'll get it up there shortly.
Well, he, the report that's in the agenda has the, a letter from my lawyer in Toronto, who looked into a number of these items and determined that there was actually considerable amount of information to support the case that the, the rampant planter have been approved and they're not incidental, they're not, they were not done after the fact, and they were actually authorized by the city of Stratford. So the, and it's important that those, your staff report, if you could see it on the screen, page one of the staff report mentions is the policy of the city of Stratford that there be no unauthorized encroachments. And that's important to keep in mind as I make the rest of the presentation. As I will demonstrate that these encroachments were not actually encroachments, they were approved and authorized by the city at four times in the past twenty-four years. So the first, go back, yeah, this one, site plan agreement. So this all started in nineteen ninety-eight when the property was severed from the, the larger property to create a lot for the Tower House. And so a site plan agreement was established in nineteen ninety-eight, which clearly shows in these drawings prepared by Shim Sutcliffe, a ramp that goes down to the sidewalk, the property line is here, and it's shown in the plan here. So this was actually approved by the city of Stratford, signed by the mayor and Ms. Thompson at the time, who was the, the city clerk. So this is not new information, it's not unknown to the city that there was going to be a ramp. Number two, the next slide, please. The building permit drawings were submitted in nineteen ninety-eight, and this is new information because I didn't know about these drawings until after our meeting in February. In fact, my freedom of information requests through the city clerk's office did not find these drawings. They actually are in this, the archives of Shim Sutcliffe Architects in Toronto. And so they were submitted and stamped by the city of Stratford here, and they show the rampant planter clearly in the elevations and in the plan. And they're actually, as shown in the plan, it had included the plan, you're, but they're within eighteen inches of the sidewalk as was required by the site plan agreement. And the, but the staff report doesn't comment on this at all. Number three, next slide, please. The occupancy permit, I mentioned this before in my previous submission, but this is new, this photograph I found and was taken in August of two thousand and one. The occupancy permit was issued in October of two thousand and one. So the building was published first internationally in architectural record in the spring of two thousand and two, but the photograph was taken in two thousand and one in August, which is confirmed by the architectural firm. The rampant planter are clearly shown, so they were included at the time that the city issued the occupancy permit. The inspector would have gone up the ramp to the front door and seen the planter when he did the final inspection of the property. And it's important to note that the ramp is an important feature of the architecture of the building because it's reflective of the zoning at the time, which required the dwelling to be above the second, the main floor. So the ramp goes to the second floor, which is the entrance to the dwelling portion of the Tower House, the ground floor was commercial property. Number, next slide, please. The city letter in May two thousand and one was sent to me when I inquired about the legal status and the zoning compliance and part, and building compliance of the building as part of my due diligence. I also asked if there were any outstanding orders or violations against the property. The city letter says, no, there were no outstanding violations that the property does conform to zoning and parking requirements. And in the twenty years since the occupancy permit was issued, there was no record of any notice from the city of Stratford about the rampant planter being illegal. This is not mentioned in the staff report. Next slide, please. To show you what I'm talking about, the rampant planter extend only partially onto Culber Street. You can see in this lower right-hand, the property line is right here, actually. So the lower, probably about fifteen feet of the ramp extends onto the road right away. But it's all with, the height of it is within the bound, the designation of what would consider a landscape feature and not part of an encroachment agreement policy. The wooden is, it does not in any way encumber the public sidewalk. It's kept eighteen inches away from the sidewalk as was required of the site plan approval and in the building permit drawings. Similarly, if you look to the building to the east, which is the Victoria condominium building, they also have a similar situation where there is, there is not one but two parking ramps that go down to their parquet. This one goes down, this is the one to the west, and there's one that goes up, and that's to the east. Both of them extend onto the Culver right away, and both of them have retaining walls that are within the Culber Street right away. And they would presumably, if the city chooses to remove mine, they would have to remove eleven Culber Street as well, for whatever public purpose there might be to widen Culber Street. It would make inaccessible both my site, the ramp, and also the access to the eleven Culber Street. So I don't know if there's any reason to anticipate this being happening, or why it's so important that it be covered by an encroachment agreement. It do not impede the pedestrian movement in any way. Next slide, please. So I looked at the encroachment agreement itself, and it talks about encroachments that are unauthorized and which I understand, I, and I, but I also understand that this policy was created in two thousand and six, eight years after the site plan agreement was approved by the city with full knowledge that there was going to be a ramp and it was built and it was approved. There's no provision in the, the encroachment policy to, for retroactive encro, encroachments that were previously approved. The rampant planter are talked about in the staff report as being projections, but they actually aren't projections. The rampant planter are actually features of the fence and hedge bylaw one twenty-eight dash two thousand and three, which are, were permitted and are lawfully constructed. Next slide. The local economic stimulation, since the summer of two thousand and nineteen, when I purchased both seven and nine Culber, I've spent over two million dollars in addition to the purchase price for the properties on repairs to the Tower House and the significant rent of mostly to the renovations of number nine, but they're related as that there are two, both parts of the seven and nine inn. I've added compliant parking to number nine where none existed before. I've removed wooden fencing and storage bins along York Lane, which were installed by the previous owner without permits, thereby increasing its travel with the benefit of the traveling public. I've kept construction firms and subtrades, most of them local, working through the COVID nineteen pandemic, including Bellable Construction, N F R Engineering, Ironside Architect, S L D Interior Design, Lloyd's Electric, Turner Plumbing, K R K Mechanical, Helena's Gardening, Matt Mackey. Matt Mackey comes every day to attend to the koi fish that are in the concrete pond at the back of the Tower House, which is quite a local attraction. Festival Glass, Stratford Metal Products, Comfort Paying Wallpaper, that guy, upholstery, and Punch and Judy who designed the logo. And I've also established the seven and nine inn, which is the only tablet property in Stratford, and Tablet is the hotel branch of the Michelin Guide, bringing Stratford to the attention of visitors from around the world. In fact, in two thousand and twenty-one, Tablet claims Stratford is their number one new destination in the world because of powerhouse and its distinctive architecture. Next slide. Heritage designation, you know, I'm an architect, retired architect and heritage aficionado, and I'm prepared to offer to the city of Stratford the heritage designation of seven Culber as a landmark work of Shim Sutcliffe Architects and one of the most distinguished modern pieces of architecture in Canada. I prepared a draft report for an application for the heritage designation under part four, section twenty-nine of the Interior Heritage for what I'm calling the Morris Tower, Tower, Tower House, which recognized the name of Jim Morris, who commissioned the Shim Sutcliffe to design the building. As the rampant concrete planter are integral and original features of the building's design, it is important that they be excluded from the encroachment agreement. Future removal of all or parts of these elements would ruin the building's architectural and heritage value. A condition of future designation dialogue would be only if the rampant concrete planter are not subject to encroachments. Next slide, this is the last. In conclusion, I'm prepared to enter into an encroachment agreement for the single car space in front of seven Culber, but not the rampant planter. The city of Stratford previously approved the rampant planter twice in nineteen ninety-eight and then in two thousand and one, fully aware they partially occupy Culber Street allowance. The city of Stratford conveyed to me that the property was conforming to zoning and building codes prior to my purchase in two thousand and nineteen. City of Stratford planning staff advised me to apply for an encroachment agreement to satisfy the parking deficiency that was only disclosed to me in October two thousand and twenty-one, two years after I bought it. The city clerk instructed me to include the rampant planter in the encroachment agreement, which I mistakenly understood to be for the context of the parking space, which is the rampant planter flanked parking space. And, and was never informed that if approved, the city council could terminate that agreement and require the removal of the rampant planter at my expense at any time. I urge you to agree with my position that the rampant planter, the concrete planter were authorized, are known to the city of Vancouver at the time of their approval, and therefore should be removed from the encroachment agreement for the parking space. Please support option two grant request as per page fifty-six of the staff report, next slide. Thank you very much for your consideration, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lemon. Are there any questions this time from members of council? Okay, thank you.
Through you, your worship, returning to your agenda, item seven is orders of the day, and item seven point one is a resolution for a tender award. And there is a staff recommendation that the tender T two thousand and twenty-two dash ten for the Stratford Public Library Wash and renovation be awarded Ternavanna Interior Inc. at a total tender price of two hundred and ninety-six thousand, three hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-three cents, including H S T, that the Stratford Public Library Wash and renovation project, including consultant fees, be funded as outlined on the agenda and that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the necessary contract agreement.
All right, moved by Counselor Ritzma, second by Counselor Ingram, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Post any, that's carried.
Item seven point two is a resolution regarding the lifting of a reserve on Cody Drive, and there's a staff recommendation that And there's a staff recommendation that council, the corporation of the city of Stratford declare part one on plan forty-four R dash five nine nine two as public highway and dedicate it as forming part of the Cody Drive right away.
Move by Council Ingram, second by Council Burbak. That the reserve on Cody Drive be lifted, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Close to any, that's carried.
Item seven point three is a resolution regarding the Alone Avenue Road winding and Huron Street easement. And there is a staff recommendation that the corporation of the city of Stratford accept part three on plan forty-four R dash five seven four five. As public highway and dedicate it as forming part of Alone Avenue. And that the corporation of the city of Stratford accepting easement over parts one and two on plan forty-four R dash five seven four five from A and D Gronestedge Farms Limited for a sidewalk.
Thank you, moved by Council Clifford, seconded by Council Burbak, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Post, any, it's carried.
Item seven point four is a resolution regarding a subdivision agreement for the Coventry Phase Five. And there's a staff recommendation that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized on behalf of the corporation of the city of Stratford to enter into a subdivision agreement with Northwest Stratford. Two thousand and sixteen Development Inc. For the development of the Coventry of Stratford Phase Five subdivision, and that's on plan forty-four M dash seven five.
Moved by Council Ingram, second by Council Bunting, discussion. All those in favor? Post, any, it's carried.
Item seven point five is a resolution, not the request from owner to reconsider encroaching agreement for seven Colbert Street. And there is a staff recommendation that the request from the property owner for Stratford City Council to reconsider the encroaching agreement for seven Colbert Street be refused.
Moved by Council Cathy, second by Council Clifford, discussion. Council seven.
Thank you, I will be voting against the motion, I do support option two, I would prefer to see a reconsideration, but. Yeah, that's it, thanks.
All right, thank you, anything further, Council Henderson?
We have these types of encroachments agreements all around the city. Have we had? I'm not sure if anybody would have the answer or not, because I've thought of it now, but have we ever had to? Like he's worried about his planter and, you know, having to be removed at some point. Does that ever happen to our knowledge? Like my understanding is people pay the encroachment fee a year and then, you know.
Mr. Fo or Ms. Thompson?
Through you, your worship, in my experience since being employed since two thousand and seventeen, I have never had to seek a removal of an encroachment. But I would defer to the chief administrative officer for her experience.
So.
Thank you, through your worship, and I would just echo, it is a provision that we are required to have in our standard encroachment agreements. So that if the, the, the city would retain the ownership and the ability to use our property. But I am not aware of a time when we have requested a property owner to remove the encroachments from our property. Certainly, they, there may be times when there is construction going on, that it may need to be temporarily, an encroachment may be temporarily removed. But not, not permanently, but it is essential that the city retain the ownership and the ability to use our property.
Anything further, Council Clifford?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask what Joan was talking about, if we don't have an encroachment agreement. Is it possible, it wouldn't be, like, if we, if we don't exercise our rights, does that property hot become ours? Like potentially if they, if they have the property, if we, if we don't have an encroachment agreement?
I, I'm sorry, through your worship, could I just get clarification, are, are you talking about if we don't have an agreement? Can a property owner assume our property and we would lose ownership of it? Is that the question? Um, certainly, this is not legal advice, but it is my understanding that because it is a road allowance. Private property owner cannot assume public road allowance as private property. But we again, to, just to set out the terms and conditions, this is a standard requirement. And all we are seeking is to treat this property the same when we, we become aware of encroachments on the property. We are not asking the property owner to remove it, just enter into the agreement and set out the terms and conditions for the ongoing use of municipal property.
Council Ingram.
Thank you, and it's my understanding, this, this question might be directed to either the C A O or the Director of Infrastructure. But it's my understanding that when a zoning bylaw amendment application comes forward. It does open up the property for a full review. And then upon that review, it is able to be brought up to today's standards, so what was put in place in nineteen ninety-eight. You know, was put in place twenty-four years ago, I think if my math is right. And today's standards and today's policies and guidelines might be different, so when that application, that development application is submitted. That full review is able to be done and we are able to bring this up to today's standards, am I correct on that?
Ms. Thompson.
Through you, your worship, yes, certainly. We don't have the resources to be conducting a full property review on all the properties for existing encroachments. You know, they do tend to be mainly in the older sections of the city before modern surveying tools were available. And so when we become aware of them, we have a policy in place to, to deal with those, with the, the encroachment agreement in place. To set out the terms and conditions for both the private property owner and the city to maintain those encroachments on municipal property.
Thank you.
Anyone further? All right, it's moved and seconded, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Opposed, Penny? Want to oppose in that motion carries?
Item seven point six is a resolution for a tender award, and there is a staff recommendation that the tender T two thousand and twenty-two dash thirteen for the supply and installation of sewer liners contract. Be awarded to Clear Water Structures Inc. At a total tender price of nine hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty cents, including H S T. And that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the necessary contract agreement.
Moved by Council Vassalakos and seconded by Council Bunting, discussion. All those in favor? Post, Penny, it's carried.
Item seven point seven is a resolution to appoint an acting deputy chief building official, and there's a staff recommendation that a bylaw to appoint Gerald Moore of R S M Building Consultants. As acting deputy chief building official on an as needed basis to provide coverage for the chief building official in times of absence be adopted.
Moved by Council Ingram, seconded by Council Vassalakos, discussion.
Thank you, um, so I haven't, I have no problem with that, I just wondered if staff could explain why we are going outside of the corporation. To appoint an acting deputy chief building official as opposed to naming a position within the corporation.
Ms. Thompson or Mr. Crinkler?
Thank you, through your worship, um, we've had those discussions before, but they are subject to unanimous discussions and ongoingly being considered.
Thank you. Anything further? If not, all those in favor? Close to any, it's carried.
Item eight is business, which previous notes has been given and there's none scheduled, so moving to item nine, reports to standing committees. And item nine point one is the report of the Planning and Heritage Committee, and there is one item listed, and that is item nine point one point one, Draft Plan of Condominium Application thirty-one C D M twenty-two. Dash zero zero one, and that's for three seven nine Romeo Street. I would just note that following the May twenty-fourth Planning and Heritage Committee meeting, it was identified that an additional condition was required to be added to this application. That additional condition has been bolded on the agenda for the information of members of public.
Moved by Council Ritzma, second by Council Ingram, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Close to any, it's carried.
Item nine point two is the report of the Social Services Committee, and there are two items listed for consideration as follows. Item nine point two point one is the two thousand and twenty-one annual report of the Housing and Homelessness Plan for Stratford, Perth County and Saint Mary's. And item nine point two point two is the city of Stratford Social Services Department's Continued Participation in the Built for Zero Canada Campaign Term Three.
Moved by Council Henderson, seconded by. Council Burbak, thank you, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Close to any, it's carried.
Item ten is notice of intent, and there's none scheduled, so moving to item eleven, reading up the bylaws. There are nine bylaws listed for consideration. Item number eleven point one is to award the tender for the Stratford Public Library Wash and renovation. Item eleven point two is dedication of public highway forming part of Cody Drive. Item eleven point three is accept transfer from A and D Gronestedge Farms Limited. Item eleven point four is to dedicate public highway forming part of Alone Avenue. Item eleven point five is an acceptance of easements over parts one and two on plan forty-four R dash five seven four five. Item eleven point six is to award the tender for the supply and installation of sewer liners. Item eleven point seven is to authorize the entering into an execution of a subdivision agreement. Item eleven point eight is to appoint an acting deputy chief building official, and item eleven point nine is to authorize the entering into an execution of a Built for Zero Canada agreement. These bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
Moved by Council PD and second by Council Ingram, the bylaws be taken collectively upon unanimous approval. All those in favor? Post, Penny, that's carried, so I'll declare it unanimous, and we'll go to first and second reading of bylaws eleven one through eleven nine. Council Vassalakos and Council Bunting moving in second, first and second reading, discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Post, Penny, that's carried, third and final reading. Council Clifford and Council Henderson moving bylaws eleven one through nine be read a third and final time. All those in favor? Opposed, Penny, that's carried, thank you.
Item twelve of the consent agenda, are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
I see no, Council Bunting.
Yeah, I, I think this is the point where I got a chance to talk about a tournament that Stratford U Soccer. Ran over the weekend and over two days. It was a very successful tournament. Seventy-five teams, most of them from outside of the area. Half boys, half girls. We used three facilities at Cirque, Queens Park and five facilities at the Festival Hydro Community Park. The one point I would like to get to is the fact that during the course of the tournament. I, we had a great many compliments about the facilities that we have here. And I would like to take this opportunity to thank the staff at Community Services for the work they do and for the help they give us. With regards to maintaining and upgrading all the facilities. And in particular, a shout out for the, the employees who were working over the weekend, who were very prompt in removing garbage. As, as it accumulated during the course of the tournament, so another kudos for them as well. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bunting. Under new business, I'd like to make council aware, there will be a press release tomorrow. That the Stratford Saddle Club, Stratford District Saddle Club has agreed to take up the opportunity to put on a candidate parade. The Kinsman Club and Mr. Bob Walters has been very cooperative with them and provided them some background information. And the, through the council of churches, there will be some volunteers to help man the barricades. So there will be a candidate parade, more of that information will be forthcoming to the public tomorrow. And I just thought we'd share that this evening, and the staff are aware and will be working to ensure that it is organized. And Mr. Crinkler does have delegated authority to close the necessary streets. The proposed route is Lakeside Drive to Waterloo Street, to Mornington Street to McCarthy and ending at the rec center. And they will be coordinating that with the Stratford Festival, who does have productions on candidate at the Tom Patterson and, and Main Theater, so. I just tell the council that for their information and of course to the public, and as I said, a press release will look tomorrow, further on that. Is there anything else under new business, Council Henderson?
I just wanted to comment on that, I'm glad to hear that somebody is gonna try and have the parade on a different route. So next year when it comes back to council, you can actually evaluate how it worked using an alternate route. And I hope the community will help volunteer and help them, because it's a lot of work to put that parade on, as we know, the Kingsmen have done it every year, and it's a lot of work.
Yes, thank you, and I'm actually quite thankful the Kinsmen are still gonna run their evening program with the music at Cirque and the fireworks to follow, so. Is there anything further on that item? If not, if there's no other items in the business, we take a motion to adjourn to committee. And at that point in time, our first committee will be planning and heritage. Council Ingram and Council Seven moving in second, all those favor? And that's carried, and I'll turn the chair over to the Chair of Planning, Council Ritzma.
Thank you very much, I'd like to call the order, the Planning and Heritage Committee. Two, are there disclosures of unary interests? Believe me, and Council Burbak with six point. Six point two, is that correct? Thank you. Moving on to item number three, subcommittee minutes from May the twenty-sixth are attached. Delegations, there are none scheduled. Item number five, report of the manager of planning. Item five point one, report, planning report, zone change amendment Z zero three dash two two. For the municipal address of four two five three, Perth Line thirty-six, and I believe Mr. Bannon's available to make a presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Zone change application Z zero three twenty-two was submitted by Trevor McNeil at M T E. On behalf of Marker Farms Limited and C and M Farms Corporation. The proposed zone change amendment is to rezone the lands from agricultural A zone to an agricultural A zone that prohibits dwelling units. And to allow to accessory, existing accessory farm structures. Not including livestock and manure storage to be located in the existing location with a lot frontage of one hundred and sixty-three meters. Lot area of thirty-seven point five hectares on the lands to be retained. And to permit a singly attached dwelling on a lot with a minimum lot area of five thousand, one hundred square meters and a minimum lot frontage of nine point zero two meters on the lands to be severed. The proposed rezoning is, is necessary to satisfy the conditions of a recently approved provisional consent that was approved in December of two thousand and twenty-one. The subject lands are located on the south side of Perth Line thirty-six between the city limits and Alone Avenue. And they do have an area of approximately thirty-eight hectares. Surrounding land uses are all agricultural. Alpkin has received approval of the provisional consent as mentioned from the Committee of Adjustment to allow for the creation of a lot on the subject lands. Rezoning application is necessary to fulfill those conditions of the provisional consent. Which will recognize the location of the existing accessory farm structures and the size of the proposed new lot. While also prohibiting dwelling units on the lands to be retained. The lands labeled as to be severed will have a minimum lot area of approximately five thousand, one hundred square meters. In order to accommodate the existing land use with appropriate services. And the requested zoning is again intended to prohibit new dwelling units on the lands to be retained, which is in accordance with the provincial policy statement. The subject property is designated agricultural area in the official plan, the designation permits a full range of non-intensive agricultural uses. Goals and objectives of the agricultural uses are to minimize land conflicts between agricultural and non-agricultural uses. To prevent the premature redevelopment of annex agricultural lands. And to discourage redevelopment and lot creation that could negatively impact comprehensive planning. Although the provisional consent would create a new lot, the dwelling on the proposed severed lands is already existing. And the proposed rezoning of the retained lands to prohibit a new dwelling unit ensures that the severance will not create a new lot with increased building potential. The lands are also a zoned agricultural A zone, permits a land uses that include an agricultural use, conservation, forestry, home occupation and a wayside pit. A land, the zone also recognizes several existing land uses. As mentioned, there are two storage burns on the retained lands that are accessory to the agricultural use. Existing zoning regulations require buildings accessory to those agricultural uses to be a minimum of thirty meters away from each lot line. And any other buildings or structures to be located a minimum of four point five meters from interior lot lines. Although no request was made with the original application to reduce the required side yard setback. We are recommending provisions that include in the decision to reduce the required minimum interior side yard setback. To existing non-l livestock and manure storage agricultural storage structures to three meters. And to reduce the minimum interior side yard setback to the existing shed to three meters. And to reduce the minimum interior side yard setback to the existing shed to three meters. Recognition of those existing singly detached dwellings and the prohibition of new dwellings. On the lands that are to be retained, ensure that the subject lands conform to the provincial policy statement and the official plan. Notice of the application was sent out to twelve abiding owners on April nineteenth. And notice was included in the town crier publication in the Beacon Herald on April fifteenth. No responses have been received to date and we haven't received any concerns to, from any agency through its circulation. The zoning bylaw amendment is consistent with the provincial policy statement. It conforms with the city's official plan and the intent of the zoning bylaw. And is consistent with the city's strategic priorities and it represents good planning. I'm available to answer any questions as you see fit.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon, for that fulsome report, questions from council. Councillor Henderson.
I just have one. I, I'm assuming this, but I don't want to, I just want to know. So the restrictions were put on for the three meters and different things like that. That's not going to affect the house and the shed that are there, right?
Through the chair, no, it does not affect what is already there, it's to recognize existing structures only.
Any other questions? See, councillor Clifford?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Thank you, and the second or councillor Bunty, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Opposed of any, that's unanimous, thank you. Moving down to five point two. With regards to four, one, one, line thirty-six, a modification to draft approved plan subdivision. Three, one, T, one, eight, dash, zero, zero, two, zone change application Z one, seven. Dash, two, one, and zone change application Z one, eight, dash, twenty-one. And Ms. Bridge, are you available to make a presentation?
Thank you, through the chair, good evening. Just confirming you can see my screen okay there before I begin?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, there we go. So through the chair, good evening, you have before you this evening for consideration. A modification to draft approved plan of subdivision thirty-one, T, eighteen, dash, zero, zero, two. And two zone change applications, Z seventeen, dash, twenty-one, and Z eighteen, dash, twenty-one. All for the lands located at four, one, one, zero, Perth line thirty-six. By way of background, the draft plan of subdivision was initially granted draft approval in twenty nineteen. And phase one of the draft approved plan of subdivision was subject to a minor modification in twenty twenty-one to add eight additional single detached lots. The applicant is now requesting several additional modifications to the draft approved plan. Firstly, the applicant has requested to merge lots one twenty-nine to one thirty-five into a multiple residential block. They've also requested to merge lots one forty-four to one sixty-one into a multiple residential block. Secondly, the applicant is proposing to merge lots eighty-nine to ninety-two into a multiple residential lot. And lastly, they're proposing to divide block one sixty-two into two multiple residential blocks. The applicant has also applied for two rezoning applications to implement the proposed subdivision modifications. The first zone change amendment has requested to rezone blocks one forty-three and one forty-eight, which are on the screen in front of you. To a residential fourth density zone. This R four, two zone would permit street townhouse dwellings and townhouse dwellings. Special provisions have been requested with respect to the minimum lot area, the minimum lot depth, the minimum front yard depth. The minimum interior side yard width and the minimum rear yard depth. They've also requested general use regulations with respect to parking and parking space size. Following the public meeting that was held earlier this year, the applicant revised the rezoning request. To decrease the maximum lot coverage that had been requested from sixty percent to forty-five percent. With a five percent allowance for accessory buildings. The second zone change amendment is requesting to rezone a portion of the subject lands that are proposed for single detached dwellings. From an R one, four special zone to an R one, five special zone. So this R one, five special zone would continue to permit single detached dwellings. And special provisions have been requested with respect to exterior side yard width. The minimum lot frontage for corner lots, the minimum lot area for corner lots and a minimum interior side yard. Dual zoning has also been requested for blocks one forty-five, one forty-six and one forty-seven. So as mentioned, the requested R one, five zoning would permit single detached dwellings on these lots. Or they would also have R four, two zoning that would permit street townhouse dwellings on these blocks. Similar to the previous rezoning application, following the public meeting. The applicant revised the rezoning request to decrease the maximum lot coverage requested. From sixty percent for a single story dwelling and fifty-five percent for a two-story dwelling. To fifty percent for a one-story dwelling and forty-five percent for a two-story dwelling with a five percent allowance for accessory buildings. The subject lands are designated residential area and parks and open space on schedule A of the official plan. And the subject applications seek to expand the range and mix of residential unit types on the subject lands. As a result, this will improve the overall diversity of housing stock in the city. In addition, the subject applications moderately increase the planned density of the subject lands through the creation of smaller single detached lots. And the introduction of additional street townhouse and townhouse blocks. These changes will result in a more efficient investment in municipal services. The residential area designation in the official plan permits a variety of low and medium residential uses. And the OP specifies a maximum density of sixty-five units per hectare and a maximum height of four stories. So the proposed modifications to the draft plan of subdivision and rezoning applications. Conform with the permitted uses, height and density provisions of the residential area designation in the official plan. The subject lands were rezoned in twenty nineteen through bylaw one fifty-five, dash, twenty nineteen. A portion of the lands were zoned residential first density, which as noted permits single detached dwellings. A portion is zoned residential fourth density, which permits townhouses. And the remaining portions are zoned future residential park and flood plain. The proposed rezoning will provide for a greater range and mix of housing to be developed within the draft plan of subdivision. In an efficient manner that maintains a consistent streetscape within the subject lands. The increased lot coverage requested has been supported by a stormwater management report. And the requested zoning bylaw amendment meets the general intent of the city zoning bylaw. Notice of the application was sent to thirty-seven adjacent property owners in February of this year. And also published in the town crier of, in February of this year. And the public meeting was held on March twenty-first. No public comments have been received and any agency comments are summarized in the management report. Staff are recommending approval of the revised zoning bylaw amendment applications and modifications to the draft plan of subdivision. Administrative modifications to the conditions of draft approval are also recommended to reflect the updated lot and block numbering. That is all I have for you formally this evening, and I'd be pleased to take any questions that committee has at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bridge, for that excellent report. Questions from council. Councillor Henderson.
I'm sorry, I'm not a planner, so I just want to double check on this. So when it says R one, five. So R one is mostly meaning. Single and semis, right? And then the five is special amendments? And like the R four means it could be. What is it, up to four stories high? Is that the difference in them, I just wanted to make sure.
Ms. Bridge?
Through the chair, thanks for the question councillor Henderson. So when it comes to the R one zone, the R one zone permits only single detached dwellings. And the bracket number after it refers to the density. So if you have R one, one, that's generally the largest lot sizes and R one, five would be the smallest lot sizes. And then for the rest of the zoning bylaw, you're right, the numbers correspond with the density. So R two generally adds semi-detached, R three adds. Triplexes, R four townhouses and R five apartments.
Thank you very much.
Any, any other questions? So there is a staff recommendation. Thank you councillor Henderson will move, thank you, and second by councillor Vassalakos. Further discussion. Seeing none, I will call the question, all in favor? Opposed of any, that's unanimous and let the record show that councillor Gaffney did not participate in this item. Thank you very much. Moving on to item five point three. Proposed amendment to site plan approval delegation, delegated authority bylaw. And once again, I'm going to ask Ms. Bridge if she could provide a report on this.
Thank you, through the chair. So you have before you this evening proposed amendments to the city's delegated approval bylaw for site plan control. So as we've discussed before, the province enacted bill one oh nine earlier this year. And that bill amends a number of statutes, including the Planning Act. One of the immediate changes that needs to be made as a result of bill one oh nine. Is the mandatory delegation of site plan approval from municipal councils or committees to staff. So the city of Stratford is well positioned to navigate this change as we already have a delegated approval bylaw for site plans. However, that current delegation bylaw. Contemplates a number of situations where the approval authority for site plans can be referred back to council. And after July first, under the Planning Act, this will no longer be permitted. So the changes to the new bylaw are to implement that change in the Planning Act. And I don't anticipate that it'll have a substantive impact to the way site plans are reviewed in the city. As this tool to refer site plan back to council has been used infrequently. I'd be pleased to take any questions that the committee has at this time.
Thank you, councillor Seven.
Thank you, I just had two questions. The first would be, just to clarify, so then there, there's, there would be no circumstance then that council would be. I guess looking at a site plan approval or have the authority to approve or not approve, is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct. So the changes to the Planning Act require that mandatory delegation and don't allow for site plan matters to be referred back to council.
Okay, thank you, and my second question is, and I, and I don't know if you have the answer now, if you need to get back, that's fine. I'm just wondering if, if we don't, if we decided to, to push back or something against this change and, and maintain some. Authority to, to make those decisions. What would be, I mean, is there any possible way to do that or what would, what would sort of be the process for that?
Through the chair, this is a good question councillor Seven. So the province did consult very briefly on bill one oh nine earlier this year. And did not make any changes to the bill as a result of that consultation. So I do not know whether there would be a willingness on behalf of the province to consider any further changes to the bill. My, my initial reaction would be they are unlikely to consider changes. As this is an attempt to help streamline development approvals to increase housing supply.
Okay, thank you.
Further, I see councillor Burbak and councillor Ingram.
Thank you. Yeah, I was wondering, we had a couple of projects that we had requested. Site plan approval come back to council, so if we had already done that. Does this change mean that that's not going to happen for those projects?
Through the chair to councillor Burbak, yes, that's correct. So the changes to bill one oh nine don't have any transition provisions associated with them. So it applies to all site plan applications made after July first of this year.
Thank you, that's disappointing.
Councillor Ingram?
Thank you, I'm going to move the subcommittee recommendation, please.
Thank you, and a second for that. Councillor Henderson, thank you. And councillor Gaffney, I saw your hand.
Yes, through your response, I was actually going to move it, so thank you. I've not.
Questions councillor Henderson and Clifford and Seven.
I just have a question. So earlier this evening, we've just passed a couple of changes on site plans. Is that the type of thing your meeting's not coming anymore? And anybody that is putting in to develop a new subdivision, that won't come to council anymore? Is that what this means?
Ms. Bridge?
Through the chair, so this change is only related to site plan approval. Decisions on subdivisions and rezoning and official plan amendments would continue to come to council for a decision.
Could you give me an example of. Something that is coming to council currently that won't be anymore? You know what, Avon?
So my, or through the chair, my understanding is that the last time a site plan came to council for approval was when Walmart was developed.
Thank you.
Councillor Clifford and Seven.
Yeah, I'd like to ask our manager of planning. If council has a question on a site plan application, like we, if, say, a constituent asked us to ask the question. Is there any process that a question can be asked? I know we can't change it or, but do we have any input if the public has something they want us to ask?
Through the chair, so certainly like other planning applications, a site plan is a, a, a public process. And members of the public or council are able to ask questions of staff or the developer on the proposed site plan application. Currently, it's practiced that through the Development Services Report that's given at Planning and Heritage Committee. Staff outline new site plan applications and site plan applications that are in review.
Councillor Seven, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm just going to vote against the motion simply because I think, especially in Stratford's case, I think it, because it is so infrequent. I think it, it would be an important thing to have, I think. I, I'm not satisfied, just sort of, you know, I, I think there's a lot wrong with this. I can see how maybe in some circumstances it would speed things along in other municipalities. But I think in our case, it's really unnecessary because it's certainly not holding up development. So I, I think that's an important authority for us to have if possible. I mean, if, you know, if it goes forward, then there's other avenues to provide. Our feedback and comments and resident feedback to staff, which is, which is, I guess, second best, which is still good. But I'm just going to vote against it for that reason, so.
Thank you councillor Seven, I see councillor Ingram and councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, and maybe for a question for our CAO. If we are not in compliance with provincial legislation, there, there will be penalties. And it's my understanding that through bill one oh nine, site plans that are not approved. Within a certain time period would be appealed to the Ontario Land Tribunal, am I correct on that?
Ms. Thompson?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, I'll have to get back to you with that information.
Thank you, and councillor Gaffney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, actually, I was going to basically ask the same question councillor Ingram did, but a lot less eloquently, so. I'll just move on.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, councillor Vassalakos?
Sorry, yeah, so I just want for clarity, it's my understanding, this is more of a housekeeping item, like. It's basically provincial, you know, it's provincial law now, we have to delegate it to staff. We don't, we don't have the legal. Right to keep the option to, to review it through council, is that correct? I just want for clarity, just because, no, there were a lot of AMO, I know their housing task force opposed this, sent in. There were a number of different bodies that tried to actually get this taken out, but it didn't happen.
Ms. Bridge? Or Ms., start with Ms. Bridge?
Through the chair to councillor Vassalakos, you're correct. So this is a mandatory change in the Planning Act, municipalities don't have the option to continue to refer. So the changes to the delegated approval bylaw are largely administrative in nature. Should they not be made, they would still become not in effect as of July first, as of, by, by virtue of the nature of the changes in the Planning Act.
Thank you, anything further? So the mayor Madison?
I sat in on an AMO working group with regards to this, if we do not accept these delegated authority changes with regard to this. Any application that we. any application that we delay is automatically approved and we could be susceptible to costs under the Land Planning Appeals Tribunal.
Thank you for that clarification, Mayor Matheson. Anything else? The subcommittee recommendation has been moved and seconded. I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any? And to oppose? Thank you. That's Carrie. Moving down to item six, Report of the Municipal Law Enforcement Officer Proposed 6.1 Proposed Exemption from Bylaw Signed By Law 159-2004, Section 12, Ground Signs specification table with regards to the address of 327 Erie Street. And I'm going to turn it over, I believe, to Director Crinklaw or perhaps the Chief Building Official, John, Mr. Dewear. One of, there's the director. Thank you.
To the chair, I believe we do actually have our bylaw enforcer online with us today.
Okay, thank you so much. Go ahead.
Sorry. Through the chair. So sign variance was received for 327 Erie Street. The variance is to add an additional price changer to the existing ground sign. The variance is for the maximum area of the sign, the setback from the sign to the traffic standard, and the setback from the portion of the intersection. The existing sign is located within a site triangle, but after review from staff, it was determined that the addition of the price changer will not impact the sightlines. Staff has recommended that the sign variance be approved such, subject to a maximum sign area of 28.5 square feet. And the lowest tenant pin will be allowed at the proposed 9.98 feet from grade to the bottom of the sign.
Any questions? Counsel Vasalacos and Counsel Henderson?
I was going to move the subcommittee recommendation.
Thank you. A seconder for that. Thank you, Counsel Ingram. Further discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Moving to items 6.2, Proposed Exemption from Signed By Law 159-2004 with regards to the municipal address of 35 Waterloo Street North. And Mr. Frey, are you available to take that one as well?
Yep. So through, through the chair, staff received a variance for 35 Waterloo Street North to add five sign frames on the city-owned fence along Waterloo Street, William Street and Elizabeth Street. An encroachment agreement is required for the signs to be affixed to the fence. As per the zoning of this property, the, the only sign allowed is one address sign, which there currently is on the corner of Waterloo Street and William Street. Staff completed a site visit to see if sightlines would be affected. We found no issues with sightlines. These signs could set a precedence for more sign variances on residential properties. Staff has submitted two recommendations, ultimately leaving it up to committeeing, committee's decision. And if approved, this suggestive wording should include that the variance is subject to the completion of entering into an encroachment agreement with the city for the signs on the fence.
Thank you. Questions? Counsel Henderson?
I was just wondering what changed from the decision of July 2012 that only one sign would be allowed. At that time, Fallstaff wanted to have a sign on each corner, one like down by corner of Elizabeth and the one that was finally allowed at the corner of William and, and Waterloo Street there, or Marnitha. Yeah, that's more convenient. And I just wonder what changed because now we're saying they want to have five signs, which the neighbors have to sit and sort of look at, you know, and sometimes banners or signs are fine, but we had agreed that they would only be allowed one. And so I don't agree with the recommendation.
Okay, and I, I'm assuming there was, was there a question in there, Counsel Henderson, or was that a statement?
Yes, I was kind of wondering what's changed. I know it's 10 years. I just wondered what's changed that we're going to allow. Instead of not allowing two, now we're going to allow five more, which would be six, right? So.
So, no. Turn this.
This is common ask for extra signs and we usually say downtown, 25% of your window can be covered. And so my question basically is what has changed? And now all of a sudden, we can add five more signs.
Director?
Through the chair, I think more than anything else, the, the use for the facility has changed a bit and so has their request. So it's a a bit of a variation from what was requested 10 years ago at this point.
I, Counsel Clifford had his hand and then Counsel Vasalacos.
I was just going to ask, on these signs that talk about like climate and whatnot, is, before a sign goes up, is it approved by the city of Stratford or whatever it is, like whatever they're promoting? Are these signs approved or is it up to the owner, whatever type of sign they, they hope or choose to put up?
So through the chair, the, this request is for the sign frames only. They will be deemed as change copy signs and they will be allowed to put whatever copy they want in there.
Counsel Vasalacos?
And I was just going to speak to, we did have a presentation at subcommittee and, and it is the frames that are being approved and it's very clear what they're going to look like, where they are going to be, that they don't actually obstruct anything. They're not like the signs that's existing there. But one of the things that was, I think was important was that they did actually circulate it to all of the neighbors who lived in the area. We didn't have an issue with them as well. And so that was sort of one of, it was asked what has changed? I would say those are some changes.
Thank you, Counsel Vasalacos. Counsel Gaffney?
Through you, Mr. Chair. One of the considerations back, I was on heritage at the time when they originally made their submission on signs. And the reason it came to heritage Stratford was because the Fallstaff building is a designated property. And there was a concern and there continues to be a concern that what we're doing every time we add signs that fences are taking away everybody's enjoyment of the sightlines of the building going beyond this other sightline consideration. So I, for one, do not agree that we should be putting up a bunch of signs along there. Because one of the considerations when we designate a property is everybody gets an opportunity to see it, not a bunch of signs in front of the building. So my position is going to be against this, this plan. And the other thing is I'm not comfortable with giving them, giving anybody a blank opportunity to put whatever information they so deem appropriate to themselves on these sites that are on city property. Because as we've seen, there's been a few political signs, local and international posted on that fence over the last couple of years and does the city of Stratford want to be pointed at and said, well, why are you supporting such and such position? If that's what happens. So I'm, I'm not supportive of this, this program. Thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Seven and then Counsel Ingram.
Thank you. Could I just ask regarding the, the possible precedence of, of the signs, is there any sort of, like, would we be held to sort of, if somebody came in the future wanting a sign in a residential zone and we refused it? What are the possible recourses? Is there an appeal process that we would be sort of beholden to if, if that were the case? And this would be sort of held over us as precedent or, or I'm just wondering if, you know, if, if we need to come back to that information, that's fine. I'm just wondering.
Mr. Frey or Director Crinklaw?
Through the chair, I don't believe there isn't a, an appeal process. This could set precedence that other residential owners could see this process go through and use this as an, as an avenue to make, make the statement that we've approved one of them. Why aren't we approving theirs?
Okay, great. No, thank you for that.
Like Counsel Ingram and then Counsel Henderson?
Thank you. To begin with, maybe just a question to Mr. Fry. I believe the municipal act does not allow us to regulate content per signage. It allows us to regulate size and location, but not content. Am I correct?
Through the chair, I would have to look into that further. The, I, I do know in our bylaw that a simple change of copy does not need a permit for any existing sign.
Perfect, thank you. And, and further, I, I greatly appreciate Counsel Gaffney's comments on the heritage component of the building. I think as as, as the property has evolved and the use of the property has evolved, we have seen banners and other such signage all the way along that, that fence. And it's not taken away from the heritage component of the structure itself. You quite often, for me at least, as I'm driving by, I will notice the people actually using the property, not necessarily that the building anymore. And it's not the building that is being impacted, it's the fence line. And so, well, I, I appreciate the heritage component of it and I would traditionally, if it was in our downtown, I would be on the same side for this particular property. I don't see it as such an issue.
Thank you, Counsel Ingram. Counsel Henderson?
Well, you mentioned the downtown. I remember when the R, RBC had put up the signs about the festival and how quickly we responded because it was the heritage building. And I understand it was right on the building. But I, I guess, I was kind of surprised this didn't go to the heritage subcommittee first and get their input on it. And I think it does take away from the heritage. It's a beautiful building and you drive by and you, you know, I, I understand they do a lot of great things for our community. You know, that you see the other night, I went by and they were having a, a circle and people were, you know, talking and things. And I think that's wonderful. They're doing all those things. There's a lot of buildings in town that have all kinds of meetings and groups come to their buildings and they don't advertise it on the outside or on their fence line in that. And I've seen some signs up there that I found. I just didn't think they were very friendly towards Stratford and people in general. So and, and I understand that, you know, they're going to be very careful about what they put up there. But any of the signs that we have proven Stratford, sure, we might not have the right to say what they're saying on it, but they're usually permanent signs. I don't remember ever passing frames that people can constantly change the signs in it. And I just don't understand that. I, I can't support that. I just don't feel it's right.
Thank you, Counsel Vasalacos and Counsel Ingram.
I think, I think Mayor Matheson was before all of us at the time for a while.
Go ahead. I'll, I just wanted to make sure that he saw my hand was up.
Yep, thank you. So Counsel Vasalacos, Ingram.
I was going to say, we do have a lot of change copy signs in the city where, where a business will actually change the information that's on it. So I'm, I'm, we, we do approve those because we usually approve the shape and the size and the position of the sign. We don't usually. And, and we, again, this goes back to a freedom of expression. We tend to not unless it, you know, be too worried about what the information is on a particular sign unless it reaches some, some, you know, public standard, which I don't think it ever has. We don't have to, you know, like everything that was on the signs. But I will also say that these signs are on, like on a chain link fence and there are frame. And what's a nice, what I appreciate about this is we will know exactly where the signs are all the time and they won't change in size or there won't be, you know, they're, they're chosen so that they're distributed and they're, and, and they're not intrusive. So I continue to support it.
Thank you. Counsel Vasalacos, Counsel Ingram?
Thank you. I was just going to say the same thing. We have a number of, of freestanding signs in the city that have changeable copy. One of the more prominent ones that I'll give as an example, which is just one, is the one at the Arden Park Hotel. That is a freestanding sign that has changeable copy. They can change the message. They can change the content repeatedly and they do quite often. If they'll advertise whatever sort of, you know, Father's Day brunch is coming up or Father's Day dinner or Mother's Day brunch, they'll advertise their Christmas holidays. They put sayings or messages on there from time to time. So it's just one of the more prominent examples that I can provide to you. But that is an example of changeable copy that is on basically a frame called a freestanding sign in a location and shape and size that was approved by the city. Further, I, yeah. I will move the subcommittee recommendation. And I just wanted to let everybody know, I'm really sorry, I'm going to have to leave in about five minutes. I have to pick my son up from work.
Thank you. A seconder for that. And then one further, thank you, Counsel Vasalacos. Then I'll turn to Mayor Matheson. Thank you.
Counsel Ingram just did a very good job of outlining changeable signs in the city that nine times out of 10 actually deal with the business that's, it's sitting in front of. What we've seen in the past and without permits have been signs put on the property at Fallstaff that have nothing to do with the property or the services that are within that or the tenants that are on the property. If we are going to allow these types of signs, then we are going to have to rethink of our sign by law and allow expression to go on at other properties. If this was a business, they would not get that many readable, changeable, interchangeable signs and they wouldn't get them at that size. So we have to be very careful that whatever we do on a gateway on Waterloo Street, whether it's a heritage building or not, would be the same we do on a gateway on Ontario, Erie and Huron. Let's not forget that retail outlets, tourism, hospitality, service businesses, all would love the opportunity to put up as many signs as possible. And we have a very solid and sound sign by law that has limited over many years what we will and will not permit. And I just think we, we start down a very slippery slope if we allow this to go on.
Thank you, Mayor Matheson. We have the subcommittee recommendation that has been moved and seconded and I will indicate that the owner has agreed that they would enter into an, an encroachment agreement with the city as well. So Counsel Henderson, I see your hand. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, Danielle, I, I thank you very much for your explanation because that's the only thing that I could think of in the city of Stratford where people change their signs or ones where they go and change the letters or they have digital signs. But that's a lot different than adding five signs in front of your place. That's completely different. I could see if they wanted to put one sign where they wanted to be able to add things and change things, maybe make a digital or something. Maybe make, you know, make it near their thing, but you know, having five signs, like I'm thinking of all the businesses and that. We had to go through a special bylaw that we allowed the businesses to be able to put signs out to say they're hiring. Because everybody was so desperate for hiring that, you know, people were driving by and able to catch that. And we went through a special, you know, circumstance for that. But letting somebody put five signs in front of, well, all the things that, all the wonderful things they do there, but I just, I don't see how we can do that. It's completely different than a digital sign changing. Or somebody going up and changing the letters on one because they don't have a digital. They have one sign.
Thank you, Counsel Henderson. Counsel Seven?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment. I do, I do support the, the motion on the floor. I think, I think the property and, and things, the building, it's a very unique circumstance and, and I do, I do appreciate some of the concerns. I'm, I'm also wondering if this moves forward, I guess. Perhaps I'll just wait and see if, if this is, is moved by sub or by committee here, but I'm just wondering if we could somehow have input by Heritage Stratford before this comes to the next meeting, but I'll, I'll wait to, to talk about that and see where this goes. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Seven. And, and through the clerk, I believe this item, if, if the motion is successful, will come back at reconvening this evening. Am I correct, Mr. Fo?
Also through the chair, it was requested that this matter be reconvened. However, if there's further direction to seek consultation from a group, then we would proceed to keep this at the committee level for this time and then list it for consideration in two weeks' time.
Thank you. So there, the subcommittee recommendation has been moved and seconded. If there's no, Counsel Henderson?
I'd like to make referral motion to the Heritage Subcommittee. I'd like to make referral motion to the Heritage Subcommittee.
A seconder for that. Thank you, Counselor Clifford. So there is a referral motion on the floor, Counselor Seven.
Sorry, am, am I permitted to just ask a question?
Well, I was gonna say.
It's, I guess.
Yeah.
Sorry, just for clarification, is this for subcommittee heritage or for the commit, heritage committee? I heard.
Your heritage committee, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. And the seconder, Counselor Clifford, that was your intent as well. Okay. So there is a referral motion, so I will call the question on that referral motion. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's Carrie. Thank you very much. Moving down to item six point, and let the record show, I, I'm sorry to go back to that item that Counselor Burbak did not participate in this item. Thank you, Counselor Burbak. So moving down to six point three, proposed exemption from side by, sign by law, one five nine dash two zero zero four, section twelve, ground sign with the address of three, three, seven, Home Street. And I looked at Mr. Fry. Are you, there you are there. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so through the chair, staff, staff received a variance request for residential property bearing municipal address of three, three, seven, Home Street. Some background, nine new ground signs were found to be erected without permits obtained. Seven of, of those signs were applied for and permitted at other addresses. Staff subsequently received a variance for the remaining two signs on Home Street. Both of the signs are under the variance and it's for the maximum area, the maximum height, the maximum setback from the driveway entrance and the, and, sorry, the minimum setback and the minimum setback from the property line. And also, there is a specification that only one address sign is to be on the property. After the variance was submitted, I had contact with the contractor and the contractor stated that if the variance is approved, the signs can be moved to meet the setback requirements. Staff has recommended that the variance be denied as it does not meet the intent of the sign by law.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Thank you, Counselor Vassalakos.
I'll move the subcommittee recommendation.
Thank you. And a seconder for that, Counselor Clifford. Thank you. Any further discussion? On item six point three. Counselor Henderson.
Well, the sign themselves have been there for years. They just added that star thing, right? So if they move it to a certain spot on their property and reapply, then there's a possibility it could be endorsed? Or okay?
Looking to the enforcement officer. Go ahead.
I don't believe, I can do some further research, but I don't believe those signs have ever been on that property. Those were, were brand new signs.
So if they follow the proper procedure, is there room on that property for them to actually be able to have them?
So through the chair, they are only allowed to have one sign on the property, one address sign. And the two address signs are both over the maximum area and the maximum height as well as, as the setbacks.
Anything further? So the subcommittee recommendation has been moved and seconded. If there's nothing further, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Moving to item six point four, signed by law variance for the Avon Maitland District School Board and Counselor, I mean Mayor Math, sorry.
I'll, I'll move the subcommittee recommendation.
Thank you. A seconder for that. Thank you, Counselor Gaffney. Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. Item seven is.
If again, Counselor, Counselor Ritzman, I believe before we go to new business, I wouldn't mind if Ms. Thompson could say a few words.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson.
Yes, thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Chair, I would just like to recognize Alyssa Bridge, our manager of planning. This is Alyssa's last Stratford council meeting. And I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge this and let her know that she will be greatly missed at the city of Stratford. You have been an important member of the city of Stratford team and your professionalism and your sound voice has served this community and council very well. And we wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you very much.
Hard to see you go.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And thank you as, as well, Ms. Bridge. I'll echo those comments. You will be certainly missed. Moving down to number eight, a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Clifford and Counselor Burbak. All in favor? And we're adjourned. Thank you.
So I will call the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee to order. Are there any disclosures of canary interest in the general nature there? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number three, subcommittee minutes are there for you to read at your leisure. Item number four is delegations and none are scheduled. Item number five is report of the Director, Infrastructure and Development Services. And item five point one is new position, Climate Change Programs Manager. And this was an item that wasn't at the subcommittee meeting. So Mr. Crinklaw, if you could go over it for us, that would be great.
Well, thank you. And through the chair. So in early February, the, the city came up with an internal working group to help push forward climate change initiatives. And in part of this was a result of the 2022 budget where council recognized the need to push the greenhouse gas reduction plan forward and assigned a dedicated staff to help push this, this initiative. We've had about six meetings with the internal working group and about half of those, we've started to push hard to have this position put into place. And we've had some in-depth discussions about what would be best to, to help the city move climate change initiatives in the short term and the interim. In the interim, so coming forward with this, we, we came up with a climate change programs manager as the, as the, as the title. But really, we're looking for someone who has some key attributes, largely like independence, self-reliance, leadership, communication and advocacy. We outlined some of the, the detailed skills and duties that this position would serve in this report here for your review. I guess the desired outcome really is to acquire an internal champion that has the skills, ability and position to help drive the city objectives initiatives forward. I think as a group, we felt what we scoped here was what's needed for the, the near future. So the one implication that does come with this recommendation from staff is that it bumps up the, the salary position and, and benefits a bit higher. And that's why we've come to council, just to bring it forward and to request approval to proceed as, as recommended from the climate change internal working group. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Counselor Burbak?
Yeah, I do not relate question, but I just wanted to thank the director for that, that report. I think it's great. And I think it's really needed and I'm excited to see this moving forward and I'll move the staff recommendation.
Is that a seconder, Counselor Henderson? Okay. And any other comments or questions, Counselor Seven? Go ahead.
Thank you. I did have a question and I don't know, I'm just wondering if now is the appropriate time or, or, or at some point in the future, once the position is, is hired. But my hope for this position, since we started talking about it, is that there would be some type of autonomy in, in recommendations from the climate change coordinator or the climate change programs manager now. I'm, I'm talking about, you know, when there's proposals for developments or, or things. I'm, I'm wondering if this position would allow for them to make a recommendation outside of the, the other recommendations from staff, like I'm just wondering if now would be the time to make that part of the role possibly, or if that would be at a future date more appropriate.
Yeah, through the chair, great point. The, the one thing we're identifying in this internal working group is that we have our own specific skills and expertise. And really what we're looking to have out of this position is someone who has that in-depth background, understanding of really what the climate perspective is in kind of all aspects to help guide staff to where they need to be. So really a support and a tool to lean on to help us further our setting so that we can bring our better initiative or climate perspective to our, our own field. So.
Is that to your question, Counselor Seven?
I'm not sure if it, I'm not sure if, should this be something that I bring up in the future, once the position is created and then sort of work it in at that point? Would that be more appropriate than that? Because this is just sort of like the job description and hiring of the position. So.
And if I may, and Ms. Thompson could possibly weigh in here. I think one of the things that you can look at here is if council has priorities and if, say, one of the council priorities for this treaty plan involves adding a climate lens to, like, we already have all of our staff reports come back with a, with an assessment on the climate impacts or that one planet principles. And so that could be possibly rolled into this, this position would be an opinion on how that reflects to our climate change. And also that if we have a climate change plan, there, there could be some, some of the reports that come to council could also add that lens. But I'm not sure, I think that would be operational. It would fall under the purview of the director and this, and, and the C A O. But perhaps Ms. Thompson could weigh in on that.
I think, I think I will, I, I think I'll wait for another day down the road at some point to, to bring this up. And if that's, if, if Ms. Thompson still has something to add, but I think I'll, that won't be something I'll talk about today. So, thank you.
Is there anything else? If not, I believe it's been moved and seconded. So all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's Carrie. Thank you very much. So then item five point two is continued promotion of active transportation through Lakeside Drive lane closures. There was a discussion about this at subcommittee and there is a subcommittee recommendation there. But before I open it up for motion, wouldn't, does anyone have any questions on that item? Counselor Clifford, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, is it affecting parking at all? I don't believe it is affecting parking, but I'm curious. The other question I have, I noticed the staff, staff recommendation started July twenty ninth and the subcommittee's recommendation starting July the fifth. If I could ask, like, the chains are happy with that or are okay with it? So the parking and the time it starts.
Mr. Crinklaw, go ahead.
As the chair, to Counselor Clifford, in terms of parking, effectively that north lane is closed, so there shouldn't be any parking impacts because the, the eastbound side will be maintained as well as any turning movements along Lakeside Drive. In terms of, already slipped my mind.
The, the doubling of the time that the closures would be.
That's right. Yeah. I'm sorry, through the chair. The, the impact that will have on operations is that we, there'll be a bit of additional time spent to make sure the, the barricades haven't been moved or misplaced. So there'll be a little additional staff time, but relatively negligible in the, in the long run.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson, I saw your hand up.
It's the same question I've been asking all along. I just wonder what type of barricades we're putting up. Like, I hope, I don't want to be rude, but I hope it's not those ugly orange pylons because when you're sitting parked along the river and you want to sit and watch the swans and, you know, and their little babies and things like that and people running around the river. Well, there'll be just cars driving by east, west, eastward. But like, I hope it's an attractive type of barricade in that it's not too high so that people that are sitting there are going to still be able to enjoy. And I understand that the river and that. And I understand that there's going to be openings so that people can get from cars through to the, the walk around the river type thing.
Through the chair, what was initially spec from the manager of Public Works is a, it's an orange temporary Bullard, though it's the narrow style, but he was proposing for this as they're the most cost-effective approach for this.
Is that the type that are like, like the gray cement things that they put between on the highways, only it's orange and smaller? Is that what you mean?
So the chair, the ones that we initially spec, I think there are four, six inches in diameter with a block base. That's weighed down.
If I may, I think they are more like the bowlers that you see on some bike lanes where they use them to demarcate, like in Waterloo, it would be more like those from my understanding from the subcommittee. Any other comments or questions, Counselor Clifford? Go ahead.
Yeah, I understand like how far they're apart, but I know when I was on it last year with my grandson, motorcycles could easily go around there or small cars. Like, is, how, how can we, I know you, you can't be there, but it, like, we talked about the M P O, like, when we have a parade and it's not safe. I, I'm just wondering how we stop especially motorcycles from, if they want to pass cars if they're in a hurry. Or is there a concern that for staff?
Through the chair, that commoner question hasn't been raised at this point. The idea of having the barricades in closer proximity would be more difficult for someone to enter that lane without running over the barricades at speed anyways. So it's always concerned. It would be monitored and if that was being an issue, we would follow accordingly.
Any other comments or questions? If not, the, it, floor is open for motions. Counselor Burbak?
I'll move the subcommittee recommendation and I think it's great.
Is there a seconder for that? Moved by Counselor Henderson. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Seven, go ahead.
Thank you. So I, I don't support this, this lane closure. I think, I, I think the time has come and gone where this, this was sort of necessary. I mean, the first staff report on this came in, in May twenty twenty. And this, this option was actually one of the ones that was not recommended. I mean, it was, it was citing costs, but I do vaguely remember it's on the report, but there were concerns about safety as well. I think, I think the initial reason that we were closing, looking at closing lanes was it was because of social distancing because although there's plenty of space on the boulevard for pedestrians and there always has been to, to sort of get around each other. It was, the idea was that for social distancing due to, to COVID restrictions and concerns was to give more space. And, and so I think, you know, that there is some value in this, but I mean, for, to, to close one lane for two months and, and the cost is not, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, in, in twenty twenty, when, when this, I mean, the estimated cost was eighteen thousand. There was also the, the frequent inspection required of the cones and, and things, which these may be different kinds of cones, but I think, I think we had people going around barricades. We did when we closed all of Lakeside. I think it's reasonable to assume we will have safety concerns with this. I think permanently closing them. We don't know the festival traffic will be like. I think, sorry, I had a thought about, yeah, so the cost in, in twenty twenty, you know, the cost in twenty twenty-two, when we just had a budget of seven point six percent or, or something like that. I think, I think we should be more concerned about costs now than we were two years ago. So, so I guess for those reasons, I, I don't support this change. I think, I think the reason that we initially implemented closures has come and gone. And I think there's, you know, to put in a, I, I just don't think it's, I don't, I don't support it.
Counselor Henderson, go ahead.
Recently I seconded this is because we have tried several things. We have tried sort of a two-block. We tried a one-block, but we closed the whole area. And then we set a recommendation to staff to see about investigating whether we could make this street one-way. So the idea behind this was to trial it for two months to see if it's even possible that it would work to be one-way permanently. So in the winter and in the summer and, you know, and that's the idea behind this. And how else can we, I think it's a smart idea to investigate, to do this on a trial to see if it would work as one-way rather than just implement it. You know, like in, and then find out after it didn't work. This may work better because people, their biggest complaint was they still couldn't drive along the River Drive. They still will be able to drive around the whole River Drive and they'll still be able to park. So I think it's important when we're looking for, you know, we just did the TJ Dolan section there and that turned out beautiful. You know, we, we took in neighbors' concerns about still being able to come down in the winter and we made one path along there and there's a wide trail for people to ride their bikes and walk. So we're making our city a lot more accessible and better for pedestrians and people on bikes. And, you know, we can't get the data any other way except by doing a trial. And for two months, it's, and especially in our heaviest time of season, if it works, then it's going to work all year.
Councillor Burbach, go ahead.
I'm going to agree with councillor Henderson and also suggest that it's safer for geese and swans because there'll be less, the traffic will slow down. There'll be only one lane of traffic to dodge. And actually, I have a question for the director. Are, are we planning to collect regular data as we do this project?
Yeah, through the chair, no matter what decisions going through council, we will be collecting data in the area as a part of our longer-term strategy for the Lakeside Drive area to help our decision-making going forward, when we also have some language that we plan to put out as a part of an R F P for, for a study coming down the road.
Thank you. Councillor Clifford, go ahead.
I, I also don't support this. I think one of the problems we're not taking, I, I think there is a safety issue, but it also, it's going to make traffic on other streets. If they can't go, if they can only go one way in that street, if they want to go the other way coming down Snake Hill, they're going to go on to the street on the other side of the, of the lake and increase traffic there or increase traffic on the other streets that are close by. So I, I think it will be a detriment to the other streets, especially the houses that are around there, the extra traffic. And I am concerned about safety because I, I, I experienced it before when it was closed and people were still driving on. So because of that, I will not be supporting it. And I also agree, it was a COVID idea. As far as I'm concerned, COVID is over.
Okay, so any other comments or questions? Councillor Henderson?
I have a question for staff. I was just wondering, when we had the road closures, whether it was the two-block section or the one-block section, did we have a lot of complaints from the residents because both ways of traffic would have had to find alternate routes? Did we have many complaints come in that there was too many cars coming down the streets then? Because that's a legitimate concern.
Through the chair, I had very few complaints come in regards to any of the closures that were placed during my time anyways. I'm not sure what happened before I was in this position.
Councillor Gaffney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, just to, to clarify what the, what was just said. For the last two years, we have not had the traffic going through the park that we're going to have moving forward here now that the festival's back in full swing. So I agree with councillor Clifford, we're going to be following all this traffic onto Water, Coburg and Waterloo and, you know, and, and the amount of traffic we're not going to add to the corner of Waterloo and, not Waterloo, William Street and, and Waterloo, William Street, traffic trying to get out of there. Because now anybody going westbound is going to have to go down William Street. So, and the safety thing, we've just, you know, we canceled, we, we first canceled parades and then we restarted again with, with the proviso that someone supervised the the barricades during the parade. So the next request that might be coming to us is we need to supervise the barricades along River Drive because motorcycles and cars and stuff are not paying attention to the rules. So I'm not in support of this program. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I, I will add that the comments around the parades were that they were the provincial highways and, and a heavy amount of traffic. But anyways, any other com, if no other comments or questions, I'll call the question. All in favor? Okay, opposed? And that's defeated. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the report of the fire chief and that's the airport operations management contract. And if the fire chief could speak to this item because it wasn't part of the subcommittee.
Yes, through the chair. First, I have to apologize. My camera's not working this evening and my sound is intermittent. So please let me know if the sound's not working as well and I'll try a few more workarounds. So on July thirty first of twenty twenty-two, the current five-year agreement or contract with Stratford Air Services for the operations management of the Stratford Municipal Airport will be expiring. Stratford Air Service is owned and operated by Mr. Andy Woodham, who has been the operations manager for the Stratford Municipal Airport since nineteen eighty-seven. Over the last thirty-five plus years, the airport has seen significant growth and success. There have been runway expansions, agricultural land leasing and land improvements and upgrades to flight safety systems. Forty local commercial and private aircraft now operate out of the airport with thirty hangar spaces provided for lease or rent. The airport now sees ten to twelve thousand annual aircraft movements largely due to the attraction of the city of Stratford and its many venues as well as an internationally recognized flight training center operating at the airport by Stratford Air Services, which also rents space from the city at the airport for classroom and ground training of the student pilots. So under Article thirty-seven point one, the city's procurement by law, a sole-source supplier shall be the only acceptable bidder who is able to furnish a certain product or service. In all cases, sole-source purchases will not be permitted merely because there is a preference for a particular brand. The department head, in collaboration with the manager of financial services, will be responsible for making all source, all sole-source determinations. In doing so and making such determinations, the department head must consider implications aside from price, so to supply or other rest or benefits of changing the service provider. In this case, staff has recommended council waive the requirement to an R F P process under the single sour, single-source section of thirty-seven point one due to consideration of revenues provided from Stratford Air Services Flight School for space leasing and fuel sales from all the training flights of the pilots. Further value added from the flight school includes flight students' contributions to the local economy by way of hotels, restaurants and shopping, while the flight school itself directly puts the city of Stratford on an international stage for flight training. These benefits do not come with a typical airport operations manager and would likely not exist with an alternative provider. Staff are recommending contracting with Stratford Air Services for a further three years. The contract will be negotiated by the C A O and will contain provisions for the following services: safety and regulatory compliance, marketing and promotion, office administration, budget and financial management, and general maintenance tasks. In addition to general terms and conditions, there will be a provision for term of the contract, option to renew and option to early terminate the contract for services by either party. Final terms will be brought back before council for further consideration before signing. This last five-year agreement or contract saw an average of one point five percent increase per annum reflecting inflationary pressures as follows, and they're listed before you. Financial implications for the current budget will be no impact on twenty twenty-two's budget. Future year budgets will include any reflected changes as a result of the newly negotiated agreement renewal. Research has shown that the provincial, or the typical cost for an airport operations manager for similar-sized airports in the province of Ontario is currently ranging between a hundred and twenty thousand to two hundred thousand per year, illustrating that Stratford receives excellent value for money and giving an indication that an R F P process may not have a beneficial financial result to the city. This report is, falls under the strategic priorities of strengthening our plans, strategies and partnerships and alignment with one planet principles, equity and local economy. The staff recommendation is that the chief administrative officer be authorized to negotiate a contract for the management of operations on the Stratford Municipal Airport with Stratford Air Services for a further three-year term under section thirty-seven point one of the procurement policy and that acceptance of the contract be subject to council approval. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, councillor Ritzma, go ahead.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second for that, councillor Beatty. And a question, councillor Bunting? Councillor Clifford, a question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I, I'd like to just ask, and is Andy and Stratford Air Services, is it the same? Like, it's Andy's always been doing it, but when, when I see Stratford Air Services, is, is it Andy and Stratford Air Services are the exact, like, if something happened to Andy, is that company still going? Or, like, I'm curious about that after I read the report.
So through the chair, yes, they're, they're, they're one in the same. And speaking, speaking with Andy, there, there is no intent of selling Stratford Air Services and if something happened to, God forbid, it, it never happens, something happens to Andy, but if it ever did, then the contract would have to be renegotiated or would likely be going up for an R F P process. They, they are one in the same.
So as a follow-up for that, we probably should have some kind of a risk mitigation strategy prepared for if there were to happen. If there, if that ever happened, that we need to come up with an alternative operator for the airport. And I'm not sure if that's, that's been built into the operations.
Through the chair, this, this was a topic that was brought up by our Director of Corporate Services and we're hoping to kind of tie this in with the negotiations to try and work out some of these details.
Okay, thank you. Any other, any other questions for the chief? If not, open to, I, I think we've, it's been moved and seconded, so all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. And item six point two is the new Ontario firefighter certifications. Chief, can you just go over it really quickly before we move to the recommendation?
Yes, through the chair. So on February eighteenth, municipalities received notice that the entire Fire Marshal's Office would be implementing a new firefighter certification program beginning July first, twenty twenty-two. This is to establish minimum standard certifications for firefighters, but it has a main impact on volunteer fire services. Not so much for full-time, most career fire services in Ontario, which Stratford is among thirty-one, thirty-two full-time fire services in province out of four hundred and approximately four hundred and fifty-one fire services. This certifications will allow volunteer fire services to easily meet higher standards or achieve the ability to do fire operations without having to meet those higher standards right away. So the new certification established on Ontario's minimum standard will have trained their staff to higher national, international standards such as pro-border NFPA standards. Will any of those departments that meet those higher standards will automatically be grandfathering these certifications that are being exceeded. Municipal fire departments will be given the opportunity to submit for grandfathering of certifications between January first, twenty twenty-three to September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Training of fire service members to the new certification levels will be complete by twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-eight, depending on the certification. These new certifications have been added into the Ontario Fire Protection Prevention Act under Ontario Regulation three forty-three twenty-two. The Stratford Fire Department successfully submitted grandfathering of certifications for fire service staff back in two thousand and eighteen under the previous or old Ontario firefighter certification program. Those grandfathering submissions are being upheld by the Ontario Fire Marshal's Office. And the fire department will be submitting for grandfathering beginning January first for any new submissions that we feel we should put in for just to make sure. The Stratford Fire Department has been training to higher national, international standards for the last seven to ten years and conduct the majority of our training certifications in-house. Because of this, that we've already meet the higher standards, staff do not anticipate any new financial impact directly related to the implementation of these new Ontario firefighter certifications. Staff recommendation is that the report of the fire chief outlining the new Ontario firefighter certification plan be received for information.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, there is a subcommittee recommendation there. Moved by councillor Seven, seconded by councillor Henderson, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's carried. Item number seven is for the information of the committee. And item number eight is adjournment, moved by councillor Bunting, seconded by councillor Burbach, all in favor? Opposed, if any. Thank you very much, everyone.
I'll call this meeting of a finance and labor relations committee to order. Item number two, disclosure of peculiar interest in the general nature thereof. See none. Item three, subcommittee minutes are attached. Item four, delegation non-scheduled. Item five, report of festival hydro and festival hydro services. There's staff recommendation to accept the audited statements for twenty twenty-one. And the financial statements and commentary for the period ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Can I have a mover? Councillor Clifford and second by councillor Bunting. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item six, reported the Economic Enterprise Development Corporation. Item six point one, C CO update Q one to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Moved by councillor Ritzma, seconded by councillor Clifford. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item seven, reported the manager of financial services. Seven point one, Q one operating budget variance report at March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mover? For that, councillor Vassilakos and councillor Clifford. We have the director here, if anyone has any questions or comments or concerns on this item. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any, that's carried. Item seven point two, Q four operating budget variance report at December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Can I get a mover, councillor Bunting? And councillor Ritzma? The, again, the director is here. Does anyone have any questions, concerns, clarifications needed on this report? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, if any? That's carried. Item eight, there's no information for committee attached. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Councillor Clifford and councillor Burbach? All those in favor? Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, councillor Gaffney. Mayor Matheson had to step away, and so I will turn the meeting back over to Madame Clark for council reconvene.
Through you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. Item fifteen point one is declarations of pecuniary interest. Are there any declarations made at standing committee to be restated? Through you, Deputy Mayor Ritzma. Item fifteen point one is declarations of peculiary interest. Are there any declarations made at standing committee to be restated at the reconvene portion?
Counselor Burbach and Counselor Gaff.
The item.
The Gaff, he was five point two and, uh, Counsel Burbach was six point two in the planning and heritage. Yes, thank you.
Item fifteen point two is the committee report and item fifteen point two point one is the Infrastructure, Transportation and Safety Committee. And there's one item listed and that was item five point one, new position, climate change programs manager.
Remover, thank you, Counselor Vassalakos, second by Counselor Burbach. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item fifteen point two point two is from the Plague and Heritage Committee and there's one item listed and that was item six point one, proposed exemption from signed by law one five nine dash two thousand and four.
Mover for such. Thank you, Counselor Gaffney, second by Counselor Burbach. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item fifteen point three is reading of the bylaws and there is one bylaw listed being bylaw eleven ten, the confirmatory bylaw. This bylaw requires first and second reading and third and final reading.
Thank you, first and second, Counselor Bunting and Counselor Henderson. Thank you, all in favor. Opposed if any, and that's carry. And third and final, Counselor Vassalakos is Counselor Seven. Thank you, all in favor? That's carried. And our last item is a motion to adjourn. Counselor Clifford, thank you, and Counsel Burbach, all in favor. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.